Ladies and gentlemen, dear friends and colleagues, my name is Pil Hyung Lee from ASAM Medical Center here in Seoul, South Korea. It is my pleasure to give you a warm welcome to TCT AP and AP Valve 2020 Virtual. The meeting will start with a special session related to the link between the COVID-19 and cardiovascular disease. Three distinctive international experts will each talk about the issues of utmost interest to us, which are cardiac injury, role of RAS inhibition, and thrombotic complications in patients with COVID-19. The topics addressed in this session are important, not only for us, the practitioners, but also for many of our patients at high risk for COVID-19. Dr. David Capodano from AOU Policlinico Vittorio Emanuele University of Catania in Italy, and Dr. Doo Gu Park from ASAM Medical Center in Korea will moderate this session.
Hello, my name is DW Park from ASAM Medical Center, Seoul, Korea. I am delighted to welcome you to TCT AP AP Valve 2020 Virtual Meeting. As you know, until recently, more than 10 million people in the world were infected with COVID-19, and the number of new cases is still skyrocketing in many regions. Therefore, we will start this year's TCT AP Virtual Meeting with a COVID-19 Special Session. This session is entitled "COVID-19 and Cardiovascular Disease." I am very happy to introduce co-moderator Dr. David Capodano, University of Cantona, Italy, he is editing CHIP Eurointervention. Also, it is honor to introduce distinguished cardiologists as your virtual discussion in this special session. Dr. Alaid Kiefer from San Rafael Hospital, Italy; Dr. Bill Gogas, Nanjing First Hospital, China; Dr. In Cho Gime, Gemyung University, Dongshan Hospital, Korea; Dr. Mamas Mamas, Killian University, UK. David, could you start this session and introduce the first speaker?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Park. It's really a pleasure to be here with you and with many friends who I see online. It's a different environment compared with the one we are used to, but at the same time it's good to be together in one way or another and share and share the experience that many of us had had during the last months with COVID-19. So of course, we have to talk about the reason why we are here in this virtual environment rather than in person in Seoul like every year, and the reason is this disease, and we will discuss the reasons that of course make cardiologists aware of this important topic. And there are three topics that we will mention. So I would ask the first speaker, Roxana Meron, hello Roxana, to share her thoughts about the association between COVID-19 and myocardial injury, which is of course very important for our job.
Thank you so much, Dr. Park, Dr. Capodano, ladies and gentlemen, and it is just such an incredible honor to come to you live from New York City, where we were the epicenter of COVID-19, and I'm happy to report that the number of cases have dropped with a positivity rate of .96 of the 17,000-plus patients who were just tested on Friday, only .96 were positive. So I think we're doing extremely well, but let me just say that how proud I am to be part of TCT Asia-Pacific and AP Valves 2020, even though in this virtual way, we're connected through the world, as you can see today, with all of these incredible speakers, as well as the moderator, and as well as our discussants. So it's really a tremendous honor for me to be here today, and today I was asked in a short talk to talk to you about COVID-19 and myocardial injury. Let me just say that I really have no disclosures about COVID-19, except that I was in the epicenter just a few months back, but personally, I do have disclosures that you should all note, but really, none of it is relevant to this talk. What's incredible to me over the last past few months with this pandemic, there's been a research publishing phenomenon that I've never seen ever before in 25 years in clinical trials and clinical research. If you look at the Nature Index, and I did this on June 20, on June 4th, with COVID-related publications, in 2020, there's over 30,000 publications with reprints of 5,638. If you look at the NIH Library of Medicine, just on the topic of myocardial injury, over 140 articles on COVID-19 and myocardial injury. So this is a very big topic, so put your seatbelts on, but note that I'm not going to cover 140 articles. So I've decided to kind of start from the beginning on how we define myocardial injury, and I think we go to the fourth universal definition of myocardial infarction, and looking at myocardial injury, and understanding how well they have looked at this with the consensus group in trying to define myocardial injury in a way that we can all speak the same language. If we just look at the elevation of cardiac troponin, they have looked at this with rise and fall, or a level being stable, and if there is acute ischemia, we're really thinking about acute myocardial infarction, but if there's not acute ischemia, there's acute myocardial injury, and I think that's where we are with COVID-19, although we could also be on this end as well. And remember one thing, this is really such a new pandemic, and whatever we're talking about is very much we're sort of defining it as we're going along and learning more and more as we're receiving more and more data, and I think it's an important concept to take away first and foremost, that nothing that I say today is definitive, but what I can say is that myocardial injury is important when you have a patient with COVID-19. The mechanisms in acute infection has been well put out before even COVID-19 came out in a review article in the New England Journal of Medicine, kind of talking about the severity of infection and the risk of cardiovascular events that is proportional to this severity of infection. And interestingly, the risk is higher in the beginning, and you can see that here, of infection, and then it decays over time, and this was with pneumonia complicated by sepsis, has nothing to do with COVID-19, but it's just in the setting of an acute infection, and after all, COVID-19 is an acute infection. So what do we have in COVID-19? About a third of the patients who are hospitalized with COVID-19 have some form of myocardial injury as defined by having an elevated troponin. And if that's what we do, and we just take it as that, that's where we are, and this has been well defined on multitudes of different studies that have been published. And many of these patients actually do not have a prior history of cardiovascular disease, and it's very interesting, the plethora of the mechanisms that can be involved in myocardial injury and COVID, that can go from a direct myocardial injury with viral infection to sepsis disseminated intravascular coagulation that I know Dominic, Dr. Angelila will take care of, but also, we've seen venous thromboembolic disease, myocarditis, some plaque rupture, all of it has been seen, but very interesting to note that common in COVID, but unclear how often it causes an elevated troponin, is the disseminated intravascular coagulation, sepsis and pulmonary hypertension, RV dilatation in venous thromboembolic disease, and I think it's important to kind of put that in the context of how we're looking at myocardial injury. So there are patterns of injury, some of them are predominant cardiac presentation, but most commonly, as we all know, COVID-19 is more of a respiratory presentation, and when they do have a myocardial injury, it's very consistent with a type II MI, with elevated enzyme, progressive elevation of troponin, and biomarkers of elevation of inflammation. And when there is a predominant cardiac presentation, it's more of about a type I MI with chest pain, hypotension, and EKG abnormalities, more rare, this is a more common presentation of what we're seeing. The mechanism could be multifactorial, and it can be from systemic inflammation to oxygen supply demand issues, ACE2-mediated direct damage, where there is direct viral invasion into the myocardium causing injury, and then there is also this mechanism of direct microvascular damage, which could have disseminated intravascular coagulation. All of this really moving towards a multifactorial understanding of where does this injury come from? Is it all a sign of, or a sign of a patient not doing well, or is there an acute injury due to the viral invasion? And I think that's an important distinction to be made in this. So talking about systemic inflammation and cardiac dysfunction, there are very important pro-inflammatory cytokines that cause apoptosis of cardiomyocytes. Systolic function can be impaired through very important uncoupling of the L-type calcium channels, and this could lead to some of the systolic dysfunction that we are seeing, and then of course, we've seen also diastolic dysfunction that could occur due to, again, the impaired calcium reuptake by the sarcothreplasmic reticulum by down-regulating the SR calcium ATPase receptors, and then of course, important inflammatory cytokine elevations that we have seen very, very nicely on our patients with IL1, IL6, and TNF, really working towards this. The ACE2 receptor involvement is going to be covered by my colleague, Dr. Cohen, but it should also be noted that there is this expression of ACE2 receptor in the human myocardium. And so when you think about myocardial injury and the fact that this virus is looking at the, is coming into the body through this ACE2 receptor, it's something to think about, where there are also important loss-of-function experiments that have looked at ACE2 knockout mice, and they show this increased risk of myocardial infarction, hypertension, microvascular complications, et cetera. And very important is to think about how this SARS-CoV-2 uses the ACE2 receptor to enter into the human cells by endocytosis and increases the RAS activity due to unopposed AT2 accumulation. This has been well documented and evaluated, and this is something we do know, and hence the controversy that Dr. Cohen will talk about. The early report of the myocardial injury in COVID-19 came from a single center on January 20th to February 10th, where a total of 416 patients in Wuhan, China, had laboratory confirmed COVID-19, they were included in the final analysis, and they just looked at elevation of troponin, high sensitivity troponin above 99 percentile of the upper limit normal, regardless of any new abnormalities of ECG and echocardiography, so it's important, this really was the very first report, and they showed about a 20% involvement. These patients were more often older, they had more often had chest pain, and all of the risk factors like hypertension, diabetes, coronary disease, cerebrovascular disease, and chronic heart failure was much more prominent in these patients who did have cardiac injury. And if you look also with COPD, as well as with cancer, they were also more often seen in those patients as a history. So the cardiac injury was really happening in the more sicker patients, so how do you divide that and how do you make important changes? Importantly, the baseline lab and ratio findings, and radiographic findings in COVID-19 patients with or without myocardial infarct injury was also very, very different. Much, much higher rates of all of the cytokines, and you can see them all listed, all of these were much, much higher in patients who did have, in these 82 patients who did have myocardial injury, and more often, they had pneumonia or presenting with their lung findings. Very important was the association and outcomes of patients with myocardial injury, and a linear correlation to the level of the troponin elevation and mortality, such that the higher the troponin levels, the higher the mortality, very, very interesting look at this, and then of course, the complications were also more often seen with acute kidney injury and ARDS in these patients, as well as obviously, much higher mortality, those patients who had myocardial injury. And another report in JAMA actually did look at 187 patients, again from Wuhan, with underlying, those patients who had underlying cardiovascular disease and an elevated troponin had a higher mortality, and you can see that if you didn't have it, you still had an elevation of your mortality rates, but still much, much lower. So yes, there was a co-location of myocardial injury and previous cardiovascular disease, but also in healthy individuals without cardiovascular disease, it was also associated with higher mortality. So that was an important, I think, finding that was presented. From our patient population at Mount Sinai, let me just share with you what my colleagues published in JACC, 2,700 patients admitted to Mount Sinai Hospital, and we actually looked at the patients with lower and higher different levels of troponin, looking at troponin levels, as well as, and you can see the numbers and the incredible number of African-American patients who were inflicted by this, you know, 30%, 60% or so, having with an African-American patient population, and mortality was correlated with the level of troponin elevation, such that you can see the odds ratio, 1.75 for lower elevation versus the three, odds ratio of three, when you had a higher elevation of troponin, and you could see this very, very nicely amongst hospitalized patients, much higher risk of mortality, the higher was the troponin levels, and you can see these survival curves. And then finally, I want to just say, are there any treatments? I know there's major, large, the recovery trial is ongoing, there's large, large studies looking at how to treat patients, and there's a major CultureCine trial that's ongoing right now for treatment of myocardial injury, but this very early result from our colleagues in Greece that was published in just last week, I wanted to share with you, with 110 randomized patients with COVID-19, looking at CultureCine 1.5 mg loading dose, followed by 0.5 mg after 60 minutes, and maintenance twice daily up to three weeks. And what they did show in a very interesting fashion is that, yes, of course, the primary endpoint was time to baseline clinical deterioration, this is not a large study, it really is a very, very early look, or an early study looking at this, but very interesting to see that the important secondary endpoints were no differences in the high sensitivity troponin or C-reactive protein between CultureCine and the control group, but interesting, some signal of maybe a two-grade increase in the ordinal clinical scale of improvement with CultureCine, one of the oldest drugs, cheapest drugs available, and we just saw the dexamethasone in the overall, but this is really for patients with myocardial injury. So in conclusion, I think there's a lot out there regarding myocardial injury, we are still learning as we're coming along, and I think that the vast, the large-scale study on CultureCine will be very, very interesting to see. Jean-Claude Tardif is running that in Canada, in Montreal, and we look forward to more and more randomized large-scale studies, but for now, we do know that myocardial injury in COVID-19 is associated with a much higher mortality, and these patients have to be really surveyed very, very closely. Thank you so much for your attention.
Great, thank you Roxana for your expert summary, so we learned that there is an association indeed between myocardial injury and clinical outcomes, and you also explored some potential future therapies, of course, if this will prove to be evidence-based, so thank you very much. So Duque, if you agree, we move to the next talk, so we save some time for the discussion, and I would ask David Cohen to share his thoughts about the other important association that we have learned of, which is about COVID-19 and RAS blockers, David.
Well, thank you very much, David, and DW, and again, I'd like to congratulate the organizers for putting this virtual meeting together. It's sad not to be together with everybody, but it is very nice to see everyone's faces. So I'm joining you live here from Kansas City, Missouri, right here in the middle of the United States, where we have not had too much COVID yet, but I've obviously been following very, very actively a lot of the work, and the topic for my discussion this morning is the intersection between COVID-19 and renin-antitensin receptor antagonists. These are my disclosures, none are particularly relevant to this talk. So I'm going to cover four topics in about 10 minutes. I'm going to talk about why are we interested in renin-antitensin antagonists, what have we learned so far, what research is ongoing, and then just a very brief summary and current recommendations. So just to dive right in, why is there interest in the renin-antitensin system? Roxana already shared some of this information, but I just want to reiterate it briefly, is there's a lot of preclinical evidence that there is involvement of the renin-antitensin system or the receptors for that related to the SARS-CoV-2 infection. In particular, the ACE2 receptor, which is on the surface of, you know, lots and lots of epithelium, in particular, the respiratory epithelium, is the port of entry. This is where the spike protein on the SARS-CoV-2 virus binds and gains entry to the cells. And so one of the theories, and one of the things that have been shown in animal models, is that when animals are treated with ACE inhibitors or ARBs, there's upregulation of the receptor, and that can lead to increased cell entry, and there's been concern really from the very beginning, once the virus was understood, that this could potentially potentiate the rate of infection and the viral load in humans. On the other hand, there is also some preclinical evidence that ACE inhibitors and ARBs could be beneficial, and the mechanism here is because angiotensin converting enzyme, one of its main effects is to convert angiotensin I to angiotensin II. Angiotensin II can then start and initiate an inflammatory cascade in response to the SARS-CoV-2 virus, and so it's possible, again, in animal models, to demonstrate some reduction in lung injury through treatment of animals with ACE inhibitors or ARBs that reduce the production of angiotensin II. So there's these competing hypotheses, and there is not a clear answer as to which one would be more important. And then finally, as was alluded to, there have been, from the very earliest days when COVID-19 began in China, and then in Italy, there was suggestion that patients with hypertension were much more likely to develop severe manifestations of COVID-19. And so the animal data, the mechanistic data, and these early clinical observations really led to concerns that treatment of patients with ACE inhibitors and ARBs might increase the risk of COVID-19 after viral exposure. And this really kind of began to hit the scene in late February and early March, as the epidemic was taking off really in Italy and in Europe, and there led to a large number of articles in the lay press about, they contributed to a lot of worry on the part of our patients as whether they should continue to take prescribed drugs like ACE inhibitors and ARBs. So all of these things conspired together to really raise a lot of concern and a lot of interest in trying to understand the effect of these drugs. So with that, there has been a plethora of research, almost all observational so far, about the relationship between treatment with ARBs and ACE inhibitors and COVID-19. And really, the first study comes from our colleagues in Italy, from the Lombardy region, published, oops, this is, sorry, this is the wrong paper here, but the publication is correct. So this was a study of about 6,000 COVID-positive cases, it was a case control study from the Lombardy region, they were matched with about 30,000 non-COVID cases, and then multiple logistic regression was used to examine the association between pre-treatment, these patients who were taking ACE inhibitors or ARBs, and the incidence of COVID-19. You can see here a summary of one of the main tables from the paper about the association between ACEs and ARBs and the incidence of COVID-19, and if you look just at the top two rows here, you can see the unadjusted odds ratios were significant with respect to both ACE inhibitors and ARBs, they were associated with an increased incidence of COVID-19, but once we adjusted for age, sex, and other comorbidities, there was really no effect in the study between, again, taking these medications and the incidence of COVID-19 in Lombardy, Italy. Then a second study published in the same exact issue of the New England Journal of Medicine, this one coming out of New York City, from the group at NYU. They studied about 12,000 patients who were tested for COVID-19 in the NYU health system. This was a cohort study, so they did propensity matching to compare patients who received different classes of antihypertensive medications versus matched antihypertensive patients, so a whole cohort of patients with hypertension comparing different medications within the class, and again, similar to the findings from the Italian study, there was no association in this hypertensive population between the use of ACE inhibitors or ARBs and likelihood of a positive test for COVID-19 in this 12,000patient cohort, and there was also a suggestion that there was not an association between medication classes and those patients who presented with more severe disease as well. The third study, and probably the best one to date, actually was just published a couple of weeks ago in JAMA, and this study, like so many of the good epidemiologic studies today, comes from Denmark, from one of these Scandinavian countries, it has really excellent national databases to track these things, and they used all of the data, the administrative registries in Denmark to link the prescription records to know what patients were taking with diagnostic codes. There were two components to this study, one was a nested case control design to assess the association between the medication class and whether the patients were diagnosed with COVID-19, so looking at incidence, and then a second study was a cohort design among patients who tested positive to look, to see whether patients who tested positive for COVID-19 had a worse prognosis if they were being treated with ACE inhibitors or ARBs at the time that they were tested, in particular, looking at mortality. And so this is the incidence study, this is the case control study, looking at whether ACEs and ARBs affected the incidence of COVID-19 among hypertensive patients, and again, very similar to what was seen in the NYU study, there was no real association between ACE and ARBs in the previous six months and a diagnosis of COVID-19, and in fact, if you look specifically at the other specific medications, whether it was ACE inhibitors or ARBs, again, neutral association here, so really no evidence that taking these medications was harmful in terms of patients who would get the disease. Then again, the second question, what about the prognosis? Does this influence how the course of the disease is? And again, here, what you see is looking in the unadjusted model, so in the crude analysis, there was a very strong association between use of ACE inhibitors and ARBs and mortality, or whether the patient developed severe COVID-19. However, again, once you adjusted for age and other characteristics, that whole association really melted away, suggesting that there really is not a clinical relationship between ACE and ARBs and the prognosis of the disease. So again, very reassuring and very consistent data. Now, there's a fourth study, and we're going to ignore this for now, but the fourth study was actually published briefly in the New England Journal of Medicine. This is the Surgosphere study that really got a lot of press and a lot of people thinking about publications, this was based allegedly on data from 169 hospitals on six continents, and I won't go into the details, we can discuss this more in the discussion period if we have some time. The most important thing about this paper is that it was retracted about a month after it was originally published, and in the retraction, Dr. Meron, the principal investigator, wrote, because all the authors were not granted access to the raw data, which could also not be made available to a third-party auditor, we're unable to validate the data sources underlying our article, and we requested the article be retracted. We can discuss this more if we have time. It certainly has been an interesting sidelight in the whole story. So that's really the epidemiologic data we have today. So what is the future? What is going on at the present time? Well, first of all, it's important to recognize that these studies, even though they're large, even though they've been published in some very important and highly cited medical journals, they're not perfect studies. Some of the mortality studies in particular have significant informative censoring because all these studies are being done in real time, and many patients are still in the hospital at the time of the data harvest. The outcomes for a large fraction of some of the mortality studies are not necessarily known. For all the studies that we've looked at so far, the exposure was defined as pre-procedure ACE/ARB prescription. And what that means is we really can't, based on these studies, assess the impact of continued treatment during COVID-19 on prognosis. We just, we really don't know the answer to that question. And then finally, of course, these are all retrospective observational studies. As we all know, those are subject to residual confounding. Now fortunately, because of all the interest in this topic, there are a lot of randomized trials that are ongoing. Just to give you an idea of them, this is a very nice table that one of the nephrology journals put together. But these are the ongoing trials that are already underway. So here are, there are five trials of ACE and ARB continuation versus discontinuation in patients hospitalized for COVID-19. And then again, one trial of ACE/ARB continuation for discontinuation in patients with hypertension but without COVID-19. So these are sort of treatment trials. Should we keep patients on their ACE inhibitors and their ARBs? Or should we discontinue them? And this is even a prevention trial. Then in addition, there actually are six randomized trials ongoing of whether we should treat patients who get COVID-19 with ACEs and ARBs. There are six placebo-controlled trials for patients who are either inpatients or outpatients with COVID-19. And then finally, there's at least another eight trials that have been registered, although as far as we know, they have not yet been started. Again, these are all trials of ACE/ARB initiation versus placebo as treatment for either outpatient or hospitalized COVID-19. And just interestingly, this list includes a 10,000-patient trial in Nigeria and Pakistan, which is a two-by-two-by-two factorial design that also includes aspirin and simvastatin as active components. And there's at least one trial of nebulized captopril, which is something I had never really heard of before, for obviously for pulmonary manifestations. So there is no shortage of trials. One of these treatment trials actually has just recently enrolled all of its patients. So I think we will start to see some of these results emerge, hopefully in the next couple of months. So let me just then finish up with a summary and a couple of current recommendations as to what we do. So to my eye, looking at this literature that has emerged over the last couple of months, although there are clear animal data suggesting that treatment with these inhibitors may increase susceptibility to SARS-CoV-2, the relevance of these findings to humans remains unknown. The early data that suggested an association between ACE and ARBs and rates of COVID-19 infection were highly confounded by age and comorbid conditions. And thus far, the data from observational studies are very consistent, demonstrating no significant association between use of ACE inhibitors or ARBs in either susceptibility to COVID-19 infection or the prognosis once infected. And so the recommendations, I think it's very nice just to summarize this concluding statement from the Heart Failure Society of America, the ACC and the AHA. They recommend continuation of RAS antagonists for those patients who are currently prescribed these agents for indications where they are known to be beneficial, such as heart failure or hypertension or ischemic heart disease. In the event that patients with cardiovascular disease are diagnosed with COVID-19, we have to individualize our treatment decisions according to each patient's hematopoietic status and clinical presentations. So I think, you know, just generally good advice, keep these things going when we know that they're beneficial because at this point, the evidence of harm is circumstantial at best. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen and turn it back over to the moderators. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The terrific lecture from David Cohen. And I'm going to introduce the last lecture from Dr. Dominique Angiolillo, COVID-19 and thrombolic or thromboembolic disease. Could you please start your lecture?
Well, thank you, DW, and thank you for the kind invite. And congratulations again to TCT Asia-Pacific for organizing this session. It's a pleasure for me to present here from Florida, Jacksonville, Florida, this topic of COVID-19 and thrombotic disorders. And the epicenter in the United States, as you know, has moved shifted from where Dr. Moran was experiencing it a few months ago to here in Florida with nearly 10,000 cases per day. And so it further emphasizes the importance of social distancing and wearing masks, all measures that unfortunately here in our state, we have not taken that seriously. So these are my disclosures. None of these relate to the content of my presentation. And I will start off with the pathophysiology. And as we've heard previously, COVID-19 is primarily a respiratory disease. And it is due to the fact that the COVID-19 virus primarily attacks the receptor on the type 2 pneumocytes in the lung. But you can see here, this leads to an inflammatory response, which leads to why this is primarily a hypoxic disorder. But as part of this inflammatory response, you can see that the disease can also transmit to the surrounding vessels in the lungs, leading to endothelial dysfunction, stasis, and by definition, the inflammatory response is a pro-coagulant. So you see what's on this screen is what is known as the inflammatory immune thrombotic disorder. And this is also one of the reasons why we have in many of our COVID-19 patients, a lot of what is called pulmonary embolism, which is in C2. Now, typically in clinical practice, we know that a lot of the PEs derives from DVT. Now, this also happens in COVID-19. But one thing that emerged particularly from the French experience is that nearly 30% of patients going down to a CT scan, although not having any necessary symptoms for PE, were found to have thrombotic disorders. So this is the pathophysiology, and I would like to go to the next slide, which really goes back to the basics of why COVID-19 is a thrombotic disorder. And if we recall the ABCs of why thrombosis occurs and the Vircostriad, right? We have endothelial injury, which we just explained. This can lead to a hypercoagulability, also induced by the inflammatory status, and abnormal blood flow, in other words, stasis. And you can see that the components interact with each other. This is the primary mechanism why you have clot development. And based on the factors that prevail, these can be more prevalent in the venous territory or in the arterial territory. Clearly, now with COVID-19, because of the abnormal blood flow and the hypercoagulability related more to coagulation factors rather than platelets, we do have a higher prevalence of true thromboembolic disorders. Nevertheless, as we also have heard from Dr. Moran's presentation, we have a series of purely arterial thrombotic disorders. Many of these, which have emerged over the past few months, as many atypical arterial thrombotic disorders. So again, pathophysiology is extremely important. The other thing that we've learned, and this is more from the latter experience from China and from Italy. And like to remind that particularly in Italy, there were a lot of government issues when it came to performing autopsy studies. Had they been done sooner, we'd have learned a lot more. Clearly showing the development of thrombus in small vessels, which further confirms the importance of the thrombotic disorder, but also supports the importance of potential need for anti-thrombotic agents because this disorder that we're seeing here is a primary reason for progression of disease, particularly those patients who are going into multi-organ failure. The question becomes at this point is that these patients may need anti-coagulant therapy, and we'll get to that in a few seconds. Now, on the other side, we already saw the mechanisms of cardiac injury. Yes, this is primarily related to a type 2 mechanic cardiac injury because these are sick patients, there's increased demand, and on the same time, they're hypoxic. But again, there are direct mechanisms related, not only because of ACE2 on the myocardium, but because we do have an inflammatory response. And these can lead to these plaque ruptures, many times multiple plaque ruptures, and therefore contribution to the thrombotic disorder per se. And then last but not least, we have the disseminated intravascular coagulation, which I'll get back to in a few seconds. So this slide from the recent Big Deli paper, and Jack clearly summarizes it all. We have a number of risk factors that lead to the thrombotic disorder. But clearly, it's the inflammatory immune thrombotic response that mediates the thrombotic disorder. And again, if you remember the Vircostriad, if you look at to the different components, that's what leads to the thromboembolic or pure arterial thrombotic disorders to prevail. And we know that there's a clear association between the thrombotic disorders and laboratory markers, I would say most importantly, the DIMERS, and fibrinogen levels. Now, this is a very important concept because we speak a lot about this disorder as being a disseminated intravascular coagulation. That is true. But this is only towards the end stage. Now, remember, disseminated intravascular coagulation is a consumptive coagulopathy. But this only happens at the end. Remember, fibrinogen levels are actually increased at the beginning. Why? DIMERS are a marker for increased fibrinogen. This is the reason why we have a thrombotic disorder. So the disseminated intravascular coagulation, where you start having your rays in PT and PTT, is really towards the end. And unfortunately, really towards the end, and once a little bit too late. And I do believe that this has important implications for treatment. Here you see some of the experience coming from our Asian colleagues, showing the association with coagulation abnormalities. Clearly, DIMERS is one of the earlier markers. But again, as I mentioned before, the reduction in platelet count or prolongation in PT and PTT is a little bit later. And again, this is observational data where we did not know much. But clearly, the observation of positive DIMERS raised a question whether we should be using prophylactic anticoagulation. And the short answer is, is yes. This is a recent article published in JACC coming from the Mount Sinai experience, where Mount Sinai actually learned a lot from our French colleagues, where they started to implement anticoagulation. But again, the rapid surge that was observed in New York City allowed to conduct these studies. Again, these were observational, nearly 3,000 patients, showing that patients treated with anticoagulation did have some benefit. And this is further emphasized again in the recent consensus document from Big Deli, showing that essentially the threshold for use of anticoagulation really should be, is low. Now, there is not a general consensus on all the details, and a lot of consensus documents out there, each one saying some little different things. I'll just give you a little bit, what's my interpretation of this, with the understanding that we don't have yet clinical trials on the topic. They're ongoing. I think the key question when it comes to anticoagulation is when to start, which drug, which dose, and for how long? We can speak for hours on this. I'll give you my quick answer. I believe we need to start early. Now, if you know, I'm in hospitalized patients with COVID-19, these patients are isolated to a bed. They're not moving. Okay, I think they would probably need prophylaxis regardless. I believe that the treatment of choice should be low-molecular heparin at the beginning. And the reason for this, low-molecular heparins do interact with the spike protein on the SARS-CoV-2. And because of their immune-modulating effects, there are also other aspects when it comes to anticoagulant effect per se. We can speak about this a little bit later. I do believe that they should start early with a prophylaxis dose, obviously proceed to a full therapeutic dose once they do develop true thrombotic disorders. And they should continue with a treatment for two weeks after discharge, preferably with a NOAC. Now, one thing to keep in mind when it comes to anticoagulants is the drug-drug interactions that may occur with the antivirals. This is one of the benefits of low-molecular heparins. They don't interact with any of the antivirals, while this may occur with the NOACs. Fortunately, of all the antivirals that are out there, remdesivir, which is ahead of the curve, does not have an interaction particularly with CYP3A4. We heard very eloquently from Roxana the implications of myocardial injury and outcomes, which are worse than patients with cardiovascular disease. I'm not going to dwell on this. I'm going to focus more on the practical aspects. Like with all things we do in our clinical practice, when we have a laboratory value, we need to put it into clinical context. Okay? So what does a positive troponin mean? Should we be measuring it everybody? Well, you measure a troponin if you know you're going to be doing something with it. And there again, distinguishing between your type 1s and your type 2s is very, very critical. But then it comes to, you know, how are we managing these patients? A lot of debates on, for example, what do we do with these STEMI patients coming in? Should they go to primary PCI? Should they be treated with Lytics? Consensus documents saying very different things. I've seen the protocol that Mount Sinai put together on how they reserve Lytics for the lower-risk STEMI's. At our institution, we've adopted a strategy of primary PCI for all. Some regions in Italy or in Spain, they have centralized systems. What's important is that there is a protocol in place. Because one thing that I can say during this entire pandemic is the sense of confusion, what confusion leads to is incredible. And so each institution needs to have protocols on how to manage these patients. Which then leads us to the question, when we do have an ACS patient, when we do have a non-STEMI or STEMI, which is the PTY12 inhibitor of choice, in my opinion, Cloptidogrel should not be used because it's a weak anti-thrombotic agent, a lot of drug-drug interactions. The drug that's associated with least drug interaction is actually prasergol, as you know. Ticagrel does have a box warning for drug interaction with antivirals. So one of the concerns that we have here is what if these patients end up getting enrolled in some type of trial with an antiviral that interferes with 3A4, and we don't know about it? And many times infectious disease folks that are running these trials know nothing about Ticagrel. And so that's the reason why prasergol, perhaps a little bit more of a friendlier drug in terms of drug interactions. My last bullet point is what you see here. Don't forget, most COVID-19 patients are asymptomatic or have mild symptoms. Okay? We know that many of our patients with cardiovascular disease are commonly infected. And these patients are on anti-platelet therapy. I cannot tell you how many phone calls I get, messages in my ethic inbox from primary care providers or patients saying, should I be switching my anti-platelet therapy because of COVID-19? I have a fever. Should I stop my Plavix? Should I switch to an anticoagulant? The short answer is no. Okay, if you're doing fine, you do not switch. Okay, and you keep on your treatment as usual. Same concept as when it comes to your ACE inhibitors. Because we know that with switching therapies, there is also an increased risk of bleeding complications. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Dominique. Okay, thank you, Dominique. Thank you for your expert insight into the issues with the anti-thrombotic therapy in COVID-19 patients. So now we have some time for the discussion. And I would like to take advantage of the presence of many brilliant colleagues who were unlikely, of course, part of the epicenter at a different point in time. We will start in the chronological order somehow because Bill Goggas here represents China. Then we will have also Dr. Kim for South Korea. Then it was time for Italy, and we will ask Alaa Idekefo, and then UK, and we have here Mamas Mamas. So my question for each of you is, first of all, how is the situation in your respective area? And second, if there is any position of your unit or hospital regarding the three topics that we mentioned today. So do you have any special recommendation in your hospital regarding how to handle increasing myocardial enzymes? How you handle RAS blockers? And if you have any protocols for anti-thrombotic therapy? So concise answers please, but we want to know about different practices in different parts of the world. So Bill, if you can start, please.
Yeah, so yeah, the epicenter in China, in Wuhan, was back in February. February, March was the peak. And in my city, I was in Nanjing, it was about 300,000 kilometers away. And there was a very low number of cases. And as you know, the hospitals in China were divided into designated hospitals for treatment of COVID-positive patients and non-designated hospitals. So our center was a center for a non-COVID-positive patients. But it's important to know that the testing involved both a CT scan, but also a swab. And this was provided by the local authorities for free. And so the patients, together with the clinical questions, if they had fever, if they were, you know, they had a relative with fever, if they had been to Wuhan or any other place close to the epicenter. So there was clinical questions, there was a swab and a CT scan. The CT scan was basically in 10 minutes was out. So there was an idea, if the patient had a minimal disease in his lungs, and then we were waiting to swab. And as long as the patient was COVID-negative and was presenting with an ACS or with a STEMI, then was coming to our hospital for treatment. But if the patient was COVID-positive, was going to the designated hospital, then the primary treatment option was thrombolysis. And there was a dispute, either thrombolysis or primary PCI. But the primary course of treatment at this time was thrombolysis. And of course, there were many patients with STEMI's that they didn't present at all. And by the end of March, beginning of April, when, you know, the patients were coming because then the lockdown was released, we were seeing mainly late presentations of sub total occlusions that we were ready to open because the patients were staying at home with pain and with some, you know, taking some pills, calling the primary care physicians. And this was a sort of the situation. Of course, you know, the troponin levels, the troponin leaks and the CAG-1B were elevated but in those patients. And the coagulopathy, which is very, very important. There were no sweets in our patients. So we were giving them aspirin plus Clopidogrel. And as long as there was no history of any bleeding condition or any predisposition to bleeding, we could give them ticagrel. You know, for the patients who were COVID-19 positive in a very serious clinical condition, that they were hospitalized, of course, low molecular weight heparin was admitted because those patients were staying at least one week in the hospital. Without walking in the bed. And this was in general the situation. Now, things have changed, the hospitals have completely opened. There is only a small, a small area in Beijing that describes some cases. And these areas there are partly in lockdown. But in the rest of the country, things are working pretty well.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Dr. Kim, how is the situation in South Korea and what is the practice you can share?
Hi, I'm Inchook Kim from Kemyang University Tongshan Hospital, which is located in Taegu. Taegu, where I live, has become one of the famous cities in Korea. Related with COVID-19 outbreak, we had a very early outbreak experience in this COVID-19 pandemic. And we have settled some of the medical and social strategies to deal with the virus disease. We had a very good experience regarding it. And in Korea now, we have 12,000 cases confirmed with 2.2% of case fatality, which is better than the whole world. And I think our unique feature of the initial transmission pattern is that most of the cases are offered in some special area, Taegu City where I live, and adjacent area in North Kyung San Province. And from the end of the March, the case of Taegu City is kind of plateaued. But cases from other regions are still increasing daily, 20 to 50 cases are confirmed recently. And Seoul is one of the cities. So that is our concern still going on. And our first case was started from January 20. And after one month of quarantine period, outbreak initiated from our city, as I have mentioned. And this was started from a religious event, as all Koreans know. And we focused on, we have several strategies to overcome the situation, focusing on COVID-19 patients. We had collective isolation for general non-serious patients. And university hospitals was operated for the serious patients at a negative pressure isolation intensive care unit for negative pressure isolation specialized rooms. And we also operated self-care facilities for mild or no symptom patients. And the social policy was strict home isolation and inhibit public gathering and utilizing temporary telemetries. And that was our strategies. And I would like to mention about the COVID-19-related myocardial injury. My opinion is that the unified definition is very important as Dr. Roxana Aaron have mentioned. I think that was a very good point that we have, we need unified definitions for myocardial injury. And Dr. Mara mentioned that the troponin eye is very important. But I think also electrocardiography and echocardiography findings is also important to describe all the complicated pathophysiological mechanisms related with COVID-19. So I think it is better to, very to adopt all the possible diagnostic modalities by myocardial injury or to find the patients, COVID-19 patients, myocardial injury for, to screen who is at risk. And finally, I would like to mention the strategies about diagnostic tests for COVID-19 patients. If the patient has no symptom, we don't have to force to do the, all the tests because of the concern of the disease transmission. So if the patient has a chest pain or dyspnea, I think it is recommended to test biomarkers or electrocardiography or echocardiography in COVID-19 patients.
Okay, Alaa Idde, then it was Italy around the late February and the beginning of March. Can you share your practice?
Yes, so Italy, but in Italy, there were some difference among the different regions. And so the first, we have to say that the first region in the Western countries that was hit, literally hit like a tsunami by this infection was Lombardy region. It occurs 40 kilometers from Milano. And by the way, this was a case, the case one coming from Germany, had contact with some Chinese customers and unfortunately decided to come too close to Milano. And I have to say, initially, there was some delay in understanding. There was intuition of a woman anesthesiologist to test the patient, the Italian patient. And then we start to have the recognition of the problem. Having said that, the first case was declared to be 21st of February. But indeed, there are now going back some evidence that the virus was here in late December, early January. But unfortunately, this was not diagnosed, as I said. So the current situation now is that we had in Italy 240,000 cases. At the present time, it is 16,000 patients. And again, more than, I have to say, 60% of the cases are still in our region. So for example, today cases positive in the Lombardy region is 10,000 over, we said 16,000. Clearly, the situation now is much better. And when we were hit initially by the virus, and again, this was a tsunami because we were not expected. And honestly, the information coming from China at that time were not so clear. And we learned just on the field how this disease is very more is so different from what was told us at the beginning like pneumonia is something else, I have to say. And I think that during this presentation, it was quite clear. We had so rapidly to reorganize anything. And by the way, there was some delay in closing the region. And this was very unfortunate, I have to say. We have to consider that Lombardy region is the region that is more productive in all the country. We do much of the economy of the country. And so there was some delay in closing the region. And we were all, the 21 region were closed at the same time, without difference from the fact that we were hit. And the southern part of Italy was not hit at all. Having said that, as I was saying, we had to really restructure anything very rapidly. And the region of Lombardy decided to do regarding cardiovascular emergency to organize a network of hub and spoke. So just to give you an idea, clear, this is a region of Italy, so it's a small country. But from 50 centers, they were doing primary PCI in the region, they were redacted to 13. And in Milano, from more than 10 centers, it was 13 center only three. And my center was one of the three. So you can imagine how a city of more than 1 million, 1 in 5, if you consider all, the neighborhood is served now only by three center doing cardiovascular emergency. So as I said, one of the three center was my hospital. So we had to rearrange anything, even termination. We had to cut all the elective, just concentrate on cardiovascular emergency. We reorganized apart from all the region, the hospital. So there were three different entry points that I think was very nicely illustrated also in the EPCI position statement that I had the fortune to chair and was published in European journal. That was reflecting what happened actually in my hospital as testifying what happened in severely affected regions of Europe. So we had three different entry points. One entry point was for COVID suspected or diagnosed patient, just to consider that they were also transferred from other cities and parts of the region. Then there was one entry point for not cardiovascular and not suspected COVID. And there was an entry point that was dedicated to cardiovascular emergency. And we had to organize also emergency room just for cardiology patients. So over there, there was the decision point. So by definition, all the patients coming with ST elevation MI on very high-risk non-St elevation MI, very high-risk were considered as ST elevation MI. And they went rapidly to calab. So there was no space for thrombolysis in our institution and in the region because of the organization of this new network. And when they were arriving in the calab, everybody was considered as to be positive, even if there was not a diagnosis and there was not a suspect. So we were using PPE and all the attention as if they were positive. Indeed, all the others, so non-high-risk, non-St elevation MI, we kept them in the emergency room, we did the swab. And if they were negative, if they were positive, they were going to the COVID area. If they were negative, they were staying in the cardiological pathway. As it was again illustrated in that European Journal publication, we changed a little bit according to the guidelines in the sense that primary PCI was the strategy of choice of ST elevation MI and also urgent and emergent calab for very high-risk. For all the others, if they were high-risk, again, they were tested and then went to the calab, intermediate and low-risk, no way. I mean, it was chosen a conservative treatment. Clearly, this happened in the really early phase of the pandemic. Nowadays, the situation is going better. And this threshold went a little bit down. And we slowly, very slowly restarted our elective activity. Regarding the topic that were touched, like myocardial injury, it was clear to us. I collaborated with other centers in the region. And we had the publication in circulation that showed our COVID case of ST elevation MI. I have to say that we did not have so many COVID-positive ST elevation MI, as I said. But on them, we have to say that 40% had not culprit lesion. So we started to understand that that was a different phenomenon. And there was a problem of myocardial injury that actually was not evident when all the story started in our region. Having said that, so on the myocardial injury in the hospital, at the beginning of the phases, all the patients under one troponin. And we saw the same trends and the same correlation as in all the publications that have been done so far. Regarding anti-platelet therapy, I absolutely agree with Dominic. We were aware of the interaction between some antiviral agents and Clopidogrel and ticagrel. So we tried to be on the pros and cons side, clearly depending on some patients. But in general, we were on the pros and cons. And all the discussion of microthrombi, we were perfectly aware. We were starting even to do OCT in those patients in the pulmonary vessel just to try to understand if there was evidence of microthrombi. But that was a research project. Regarding ACE inhibitors, the same, I mean, we saw the same publication, but we are aligned to what was said. I mean, if the patient is on ACE inhibitor, there is no sense to change it. And then another thing is if you have to start a therapy. So again, we were severely hit. It was really not easy to go through that. We were not prepared at the moment, but we rapidly prepared. And things now are getting much better because the government decided to close all the region. It was two months lockdown. And I think that just only with very severe and strict measurement, as China taught us, we can pass through all this. And still, we are wearing masks in Milano region.
Okay, Alaa Idde, thank you very much also for sharing your thoughts about organizational aspects, which is another important component of the story. Dr. Mamas, how about UK? You were the fourth in line, if we discuss the four countries. But of course, it's a very large country and it was hit very hard as well.
Yes, so we have had over 300,000 positive cases in the United Kingdom and 43,500 deaths. So we're number two in terms of per capita death rate in the world, second only to the United States. Our first case was in January, January 29th, two Chinese nationals visiting the United Kingdom. And the first death was the 5th of March. We have had a national lockdown since the 23rd of March. Many of us believing that it was probably a week to two weeks too late, but we are where we are. In terms of the national cardiovascular health of the population, my group has been very fortunate. We have had access through the National Institute of Cardiovascular Outcomes, researched to live national data. And we're seeing a lot of interesting things. So first and foremost, we're seeing something like a 40 to 50% reduction in acute coronary syndrome cases. So that's going to be a paper that's going to come out in the Lancet shortly. We've also seen, number one, a big increase in out-of-hospital cardiac arrests. And in those that do survive coming into hospital, we're not taking them to cath lab. We've also seen a change in the place of death of many patients, particularly from cardiovascular disease. Patients are moving from the hospitals and dying much more in nursing homes. And I think the reason has been that doctors and as well as patients are just frightened of coming to hospital. And so a lot more people are dying in the community. So one of our other analyses suggests that there's been over 10,000 excess. So one of our other analyses suggests that there's been over ten thousand excess deaths uh compared to the last decade, um using statistical modeling, even if you take out um COVID-related deaths. In terms of um other things that we've seen, we haven't moved towards thrombolysis in the United Kingdom. So when we've analyzed our PCI registry, um because it's very much a hub and spoke model in the National Health Service, it's been all primary PCI. If anything, thrombolysis has slightly dropped during the COVID pandemic, which I think is a good thing. In terms of um the way we manage our patients with regards to the three talks. Um in my unit, we don't measure troponin unless we have um a thought that it may be an acute coronary syndrome. I don't think there's much value in that you're not going to change your management by having a positive or negative troponin um in someone that's coming with COVID if you don't suspect acute coronary syndrome. We are recognizing and seeing some really good data that patients with COVID are at increased risk of thromboembolic events. So we are treating them prophylactically, um anyone that's hospitalized, um generally with river oxaban. And um in terms of our ACE inhibitor strategy, um as per European Society of Cardiology guidelines, we are not discontinuing uh these drugs in patients hospitalized that may be on these medications either for heart failure or for hypertension.
Thank you. Okay, very nice. So uh I think that this is a very dicey share of each country experience. I'm gonna, the quick question to the presenter and and then we end up the discussion. I I have a quick question to Roxana. And the the last week, you know, Dr. uh Skriper Bangalore reported a case series of ST elevation MI in the uh sixth New York hospital. You know, some although the number of patients is uh small and more than fifty percent shows non coronary myocardial injury, there are uh variability in presentation, high prevalence of non-obstructive disease and overall patient had very poor prognosis. I think this pattern could be a great burden on emergent decision-making regarding direct coronary angio or primary PCI or not. How can you conduct differential diagnosis and manage ST elevation COVID nineteen patients? Could you introduce in the, in New York experience? I think this is a very easy question, yes.
So yes, I mean, I think it was an interesting publication in the New England Journal by Trifal Bangalore. Uh eighteen patients, I think, in in about six hospitals, really small numbers. I was actually surprised to see that publication because I had seen larger numbers in the Italian series that was also presented, but not, unfortunately, not accepted. But um uh looking at uh at that, and I think what, taking a step back and now that we know more, I think we can be more smarter about what we're doing. We have set up a COVID, a a lab with extra, extra precautions. But at the moment, we're really treating all patients like they all have COVID. So as far as infection to the um to the healthcare providers, we are really using, because we know so little about this. The big question you're asking is, in the COVID nineteen patient who presents with a possible myocardial injury, who should go to the cath lab? And I think that's a very, very important question. Obviously, when you see an ST elevation on EKG with chest pain and 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 important um uh pathognomonic signs of ST segment elevation MI, even if this could be myocarditis, et cetera, I think you owe it to the patient to bring them because there are so many COVID positive patients that now, as we have heard from Dr. Angelo Lo, that he's seeing a COVID positive patients who also have a STEMI. True, true unrelated, may not be a COVID-related ST segment elevation MI, but we certainly would not want to miss that just because they have a COVID uh positive diagnosis. We would bring those patients and treat them the way we would everyone else and bring them to the cath lab. But we have a policy that uh we treat all patients as if they have COVID positivity as far as infection to other, to healthcare personnel. Now, it's possible that if you actually, and and I like when I heard Dr. Mama speak, that they're not really measuring troponin on everyone, only in the highly suspected patients. And I think that we're doing that on everyone because we're, we're doing a lot of work in in our data mining and trying to better understand and classify and clarify this. So that's part of some of the projects we're doing at Mount Sinai. But I think the idea that you really look at the clinical syndrome, the patient's EKG findings, and then, of course, biomarkers and probably some imaging as well. All of this could be done in a very short period of time, not to lose a patient who's actually having a plaque rupture that requires balloon or technical um reopening of the artery, of the infarct-related artery. But if you bring everyone to the cath lab, you will have a fifty percent rate of non-obstructive disease and other kinds of microvascular as well as uh pericardial, um you know, inflammation that could be mimicking what looks to be like an acute coronary syndrome. So we have to kind of take all of those things into consideration. My view is, we should never miss the opportunity of opening an infarct-related artery. We know that is how we can save lives. So we should be making sure that we don't forget that cardiovascular disease is the number one cause of death still, even with the COVID pandemic. And so we've got to make sure that we don't miss the forest from the trees and leave the patients uh untreated just because we are not, we think it's just COVID and probably non-obstructive. I think we should be very vigilant.
Thank you, thank you, very nice answer. And the second quick question to the David Cohen, you know, uh recently, a two paper uh related with the SARS-CoV-2 was retracted in the Lancet and uh New England Journal of Medicine. And could you comment on the lesson learned from SARS-CoV-2 scandal in the current pandemic period? How can you cough and deal with such epidemics in unprecedented Celtic area?
Uh thank you, DW. Yes, that that was a very, it's been an interesting chapter uh in this pandemic. Is again, first of all, the very large number of publications and people really rushing to try to figure out um what's going on and what we can do to help these, you know, these patients. Uh you know, clearly, the, you know, the two certain, three certain sphere papers were really withdrawn. There was the one that was in the New England Journal on ACE inhibitors and ARBs. Uh there was the one that was the most high profile, which was the one that was published in the Lancet on hydroxychloroquine. And there was a small um also influential paper that was in a pre-print that was withdrawn on ivermectin that led many of the countries in Latin America to start using the medication broadly because it was purported to be extremely beneficial. Uh I think the, the, you know, the main lesson here is that we can't, we we can't uh um ignore our responsibility as peer reviewers and as members of the scientific community to, you know, to really look at what we're getting. I mean, there was again this tremendous rush to try to publish things quickly and to make sure that, uh you know, no important information was uh missed. Uh and as a result, I think these papers, which in retrospect had many, many red flags about them. And we can talk for, I can, you know, talk for an hour about all the issues that were, became obvious as the time went along. Um but, you know, again, I think we have to be just, we have to be careful. When things seem to be too good to be true, we have to look carefully at them. And we cannot uh shirk our responsibility as members of the scientific community and in in peer review. And finally, I think, you know, perhaps the biggest message that that comes out of the COVID pandemic with respect to science and publications is uh the overwhelming importance of the, you know, of randomized trials. I think, uh you know, in particular, the UK has really led the way here, uh you know, with the recovery trial. Uh but I think we, you know, we see what's going on in the United States today, I think, is still problematic. In the United States, we have many uh small trials. This hospital is trying one thing, this other hospital is trying a very slightly different twist on it. Another hospital, every hospital is trying their own uh their own treatment. And as a result of that, what have we learned? Um almost nothing whatsoever, whereas the UK, that was much more organized and said, from the get-go, we're going to, you know, we're going to do this large, very well-structured trial within the NHS. We're going to gauge all of the, all the practitioners and we're going to randomize patients. And they have, you know, very quickly, you know, out of, you know, in a country that's a quarter the size of the United States, we have two enormous, you know, contributions from the UK, uh both with respect to the non-benefit of hydroxychloroquine and the benefit of dexamethasone. Um and we, you know, we need to really encourage countries, these very national broad efforts uh to randomize patients so we can learn quickly. Because uh rushing to, rushing to science is not, is not a good strategy. Randomization is still the key to learning what works and what doesn't.
It's great. Okay, I I think due to the limited time, we had David Capodanno. Could you propose just last question to presenter or the discussion?
Yes, of course. So maybe uh in the interest of time, we could just try to wrap up the the key messages that I've learned from the nice lectures of the three speakers and correcting if I'm wrong. But what I really take on from the presentation of Roxana is the prognostic importance of myocardial injury. We don't know whether this is a causal effect or just a marker, but the higher the troponins, the worse the outcomes. So we should be aware of that when we see these patients with the uh myocardial injury as well. But Roxana also said that don't rush to the cath lab, stay solid, of course, with all you know about coronary artery disease, particularly in this pandemic. We also learned that there is probably no real association between ACE inhibitors and COVID nineteen, according to the nice lecture by David Cohen. So at least this waiting for the trial seems to be addressed, but we will see. And from Dominic, many practical messages about the use of anticoagulants. Low molecular weight heparin first, particularly because this is prophylaxis in this patient who are at bed mostly. And also beware of the interaction between Py twelve inhibitors and drugs that are used for COVID nineteen. So if you agree and if we agree that these are practical lessons from this, uh I would like to thank all the lecturers. I would like to thank all the panelists for sharing their thoughts from their respective countries. And maybe uh DW, if you agree, we can wrap up this session and thank all the viewers as well for watching this video.
Thank you, thank you, wonderful.